Hi, good afternoon and welcome to the Wednesday, May 27th, 2020 Special Board of County Commissioners Meeting. I'm Kate Flahlin, Public Information Officer for Sedgwick County. Commissioners, we have some very important conversations this afternoon, so I will let you start the meeting, Chairman.
Okay. Thank you, Kate. We'll officially call this meeting to order, a special meeting of the Sedgwick County Board of Commissioners on Wednesday, May 27th, at 1:30. Thank you, Commissioners, for all being available to come to this, to this meeting. And, Madam Clerk, next item.
Roll call. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Present.
Commissioner Dennis?
Present.
Commissioner Howell?
Present.
Commissioner Cruz?
Present.
Chairman Meitzner?
Present. Next item, please.
Public agenda.
Commissioners, you've received, again, this is the way we handle public input in accordance with the rules. You've received copies of a number of comments that we've all received. If there's anybody that would like to make a statement or, or point anything out.
Vote to receive and file.
Second.
Motion, a second, to receive and file the public comments. Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Madam Clerk, next business. Next item, please.
New business. Item C, discussion regarding actions by the executive and legislative branches of state government in relation to COVID-19 pandemic.
Chairman, Tom Stoles, County Manager, thank you for agreeing to take, we're a little bit out of sequence today, we have an item A and B also, but Dr. Minz is here, the county's health officer, as a, as a resource today, and he has a 2:30 appointment, so we wanted to do this first to accommodate his schedule, and we'll come back and grab items A and B. The first item today that we're going to discuss is, in response to the action yesterday by Governor Kelly vetoing House Bill 2054, and essentially, as part of that whole action yesterday, has put the onus of guidance back to the county on matters related to COVID response. So, we, we wanted to have that discussion today. There are two documents out on our website. One is the Recovery Plan of Sedgwick County, which, in it, contains Governor Kelly's phased approach plan, and then, of course, there, the document on the website is also Governor Kelly's plan, as, as it was originally written. So, we've got two documents out there, and the Commission will have a number of options to consider today, moving forward. Everything from adopting no plan, to adopting one of these plans and either regulating it, or, to a lesser degree, maybe adopting them as guidelines or recommendations, moving forward, as we, as we continue the battle with COVID. And I think that's why Dr. Minz is here. I think the action that we'll ask for the Commission to take, at the end of this agenda item, is to give, by vote, a set of guidance to give to Dr. Minz, to help guide the county as we continue through the, through the COVID issue this summer. So, with that, I think we'll handle it, Justin Wagner is going to get up and kind of recap for us what happened yesterday, and then we can begin to talk about the plans and have a discussion, and I think Dr. Minz will take the podium at that point and be available for questions or, or comment.
Thank you, Tom. My name is Justin Wagner, Assistant County Counselor. Good afternoon, Commissioners. The, just to, as Tom explained, the Governor Kelly had previously had a declared multiple states of disaster, kind of a continuing state of disaster, that had been extended through May 26th, so it was through yesterday. Last Friday, early in the morning, the Kansas Legislature approved the Senate substitute for House Bill 2054, which would have taken a, a number of actions pertaining to COVID-19. But yesterday, the Governor exercised her right to veto the bill. She also declared a new declaration of disaster, but announced that she would not move her AdAstra plan along as an executive order any further, but instead would make it a guidance document that local governments could utilize, if they would see fit to utilize it, as either a local order, or, in some other fashion, but that it would no longer be mandated statewide. I think Tom talked through some of the options that, you know, briefly, that you may have in front of you. Obviously, there are actions we've talked through over the last few months the Board of County Commissioners can take, whether it's actual, you know, an actual action or a recommendation, there are things that Dr. Minz has power under state law to do as well. I did want to very briefly outline the difference between Phase Two of the Governor's AdAstra Plan, which we were operating under, through yesterday, and how things are now. In other words, the things that were not allowed in Phase Two that, you know, would be allowed now, and, and obviously, maybe items of discussion that you want to talk through today. There's, there's really, I think, primarily six of these that I'll focus on. The first would be bars and nightclubs. Those are, those were prohibited in Phase Two, except to the extent that they could operate curbside and carryout services. The second item that I'd focus on is in-person commencement or graduation ceremonies. To summarize the, the Governor's Phase Two order, those were limited to having 15 people in a given space. The, the third one would be swimming pools. Were not allowed, with the exception for single-family pools, or pools being used for physical therapy or first responders. Also, outdoor and indoor large entertainment venues with capacities exceeding 2,000 people were not allowed. It is worth pointing out that the Governors frequently asked questions, and some of their input to local governments around the state did clarify and modify that some, but that, if you're looking at the executive order, was still prohibition in, in Phase Two. The fifth one would be fairs, festivals, carnivals, and parades. Those are all grouped together, of things that would not, that were not allowed in Phase Two. Then lastly, it would be summer camps. There was some, there was also some language about educational facilities and how they'd have to change, but I, I don't think that's really been the subject of too much discussion. And I, I didn't have a chance before I came in here today to see if the Governor renewed her executive order yesterday on, on educational institutions, but that's possibly a seventh item that, that would be for discussion, I guess, in terms of what's different from Phase Two, to where things stand today. I'd be happy to stand for any questions on, on those items.
Any questions for the Commission? Justin, thank you for the summary.
Thank you, Commissioners.
I might comment that the, the Governor also has called for another session next week.
Thank you, Chairman. Justin Wagner, again, Assistant County Counselor. And I'd like to mention that one of the things that the Governor did yesterday was that she called a special session of the Legislature for June 3rd, so that'll be next week. To take up, I believe she was talking about taking up, in particular, the extension of her declaration of disaster. I defer if Mike Papoun has the, I don't think she talked about anything else that she wanted to call that session for, if I remember correctly. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions so far? Okay. I don't think so. Next up, Tom?
I think Commissioners, at this point now, I, I think there should be discussion in, about what, what do we want to do next? Whether that is, take a look at the county plan, and recommending to Dr. Minz that we adopt that as guideline or regulation, or not, or whether we, whether the Commission wants to look at the AdAstra plan, the, the Governor's plan, and adopt it as regulation, or as, what the Governor did was simply as guidelines. We do have the luxury today of seeing what other counties are doing. Johnson County has basically made the decision to keep Governor Kelly's AdAstra plan as a set of guidelines. I think some of our neighboring counties are moving in the same direction. A western Kansas county with some of the meatpacking issues out there with COVID have opted to keep the plan and keep it in Phase Two, so there's a variety of things going on around the state now, but it's back in the Commission domain. So with that, I think we just need some guidance or some dialogue from the Commission on how they want to proceed. I'll go ahead and ask Dr. Minz to take the podium at this point, and be available for questions, or maybe he can make a recommendation to you, if, if you'd rather have him start, Chairman, or Commission, your, your decision on how you want to go forward from this point.
Okay. That'd be fine. Dr. Minz, welcome to the Commission. Thanks for taking time to be here.
Thank you. Yeah, Carol Minz, Health Officer, Sedgwick County. Did you want, you'd ask if you, Chairman, wanted to make a recommendation at this point about how to proceed? Is that what I heard?
I think, I think we look, Chairman, to you guys to, to tell us, do you guys want to make a recommendation? Would you like Dr. Minz to start the conversation? I think we just seek some guidance on how you want to proceed from here.
Okay, well, I'd like to clarify something. Tom, you, you expressed what Johnson County had done. I think you said they were, maybe, you, you said they adopted guidelines of AdAstra, but...
I think they are...
They just, they're, they are not doing anything to impose additional limits.
That's correct, sir.
And they're referencing and recommending that they continue to adhere to the phases in the, in the State's AdAstra plan.
That's correct, sir.
So, I just wanted to confirm that. Yep, Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Chairman. Just one point of clarification, so, when they use the word recommend, that's different than the, than the idea of an order, and I think it comes down to the issue of enforcement, regulation versus recommendation. So, I guess my, my question would be, what Johnson County has done, if I understand correctly, is they have recommended those guidelines, but it doesn't come with any type of enforcement powers. Is that a fair way to describe that?
I'll let Mike chime in. Commissioner, but I believe you are correct, it's the former, that they are recommendations and not regulatory in nature. Mike?
Mike Papoun, County Counselor. Yes, Commissioner, that's, you're right. Your understanding of that is correct. These are only, Johnson County merely adopted recommendations to follow the Governor's AdAstra plan. It's not an order.
And, and their, their starting point is, is Phase 2.0 as recommendations only? Is that what I understand?
Well, if she, if, if they are following or recommending to adhere to that, the phases that are currently in that plan, I believe Phase Two goes to June 8th, and so they would be currently in June, in Phase Two.
Do we know whether the Governor's going to continue to make recommendations at the state level as we go forward?
I have no idea about that, Commissioner. I, I assume Johnson County is operating under the phases as outlined in the May 26th, 2020 plan that she developed.
Okay. I may have other questions, but a lot of others, others talk for now. Thank you.
Commissioner Howell, I, I'll confirm that, I talked to the Chairman of Johnson County this morning and confirmed that, yep, he was, no, there's no enforcement, he used that, that terminology, and said, just adopt, or he didn't even say adopt, they just, they were making it as a recommendation. I asked, so does that mean no enforcement? Could a, a bar technically be open, even though it's not under the recommendation? And, in that phase? And he said, well, yes, it could, it's just not, there's no enforcement. And hopefully, then he, then everybody, everybody, I think, I guess for the public, I'd always make sure that we're talking about social distancing and hygiene, and all of those things are always part of the, any of the recommendations come with, with those kind of things.
I guess I'm of the, of the person, I, I guess I believe that it's in the best interest of our businesses to demonstrate to the public and their employees that they're being thoughtful, and they can implement mitigations that they feel are reasonable, that impresses upon their customers and their employees that they're aware of this virus, and they're doing reasonable things to mitigate that risk. And if people don't feel that that business has taken that, that position, then they have the opportunity of not going to that business. And so, I, I would like to see us kind of move in that direction, and simply say, I think it's fine for us to make recommendations on social distancing, and anybody who wants to wear a mask certainly can wear a mask, and that type of thing, but I don't know that we ought to be trying to stipulate how many people can be in a gathering, because some of that doesn't really make sense to me, never, never actually has. And we're talking about, her Phase Three plan, I think, has up to 60 people, that are separate from another gathering of up to 60 people, by six feet. To me, that doesn't make sense. So, to me, you know, could we open up the baseball stadium, for example, if that's what the, if the, if the operators wanted to do that safely? I think I could see ways they might mitigate risk over there, maybe they would use every other row, for example. There's got to be some things that they ought to, they ought to, they ought to impress upon the public that it's safe to come here, understand the risks that you're taking, we do what we can to mitigate risk, but we allow, we allow a baseball game to happen. I think we ought to, to back off and let the public have, have the reins here, and, and we shouldn't try to, try to order them to do anything. I think making recommendations is reasonable, but I, I don't, I don't feel comfortable making an order here at Sedgwick County.
Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you. You know, I think it's important that we take a measured approach. I mean, we have to still maintain the course and be diligent in our efforts. I mean, we have to understand that going back and forth is really not good for our community. We have to set guidelines, we have to have the courage to make decisions as the Board of Health, because that's what we're elected to do. This really isn't about all of the rhetoric that's been happening, as far as red and blue, or liberal and conservative, this is about the health and safety of every single person who lives in our county. People want to know what's happening, people want to, to be able to make a decision based on the things and the rules and, and regulations that we are going to set, or recommendations, which is probably the, the course. But, I mean, I think that we owe it to the residents of Sedgwick County, we owe it to the healthcare workers, and the frontline heroes who have been working diligently over the past 10 weeks by staying the course. We have to continue a measured approach. We can't be making sausage from the bench, as, as has been mentioned in the past, and we have to, give us time and allow us to receive the data that's collected on a, on a daily basis, to understand what we do today affects us two weeks from today, and if we look back over the last two weeks, what we did now is we're seeing those successes for today. So, I really have to, we have to make a decision that stays the course of what everybody has been leaning towards. I think changing it up is only going to create more confusion, more questions. You know, we talk about personal responsibility, we talk about following the rules. Well, you know, when Commissioners talk about personal responsibility, but at the same time, attend weekend events without masks, shaking hands with World War II vets and more than other 60 individuals, if, if we don't follow the own rules that we set, how can we expect the public to, to follow those rules that we set for ourselves? I think it's important we have to maintain the course, and I am just going to lay it out here, and I'm going to make a motion that I move that the Board of County Commissioners take action to adopt the Governor's AdAstra plan as strongly recommended guidelines to be followed by Sedgwick County residents and businesses.
Okay. You want, repeat your motion?
I move that the Board of County Commissioners take action to adopt the Governor's AdAstra plan as strongly recommended guidelines to be followed by Sedgwick County residents and businesses.
Okay. Is there a second? And, doesn't look like there's a second at this point, so, thank you. Okay, so, moving on. Other comments at this point? I think the, the wording of, of recommending is, is a good word, that we recommend, I kind of fall in line with that. I think there might be confusion if we strongly recommend that these are the guidelines that people follow. It might be, it might be interpreted that, that if I'm in this area of a business or something, these are the guidelines I have to, to follow, based on Commission actions, so that's the reason. I, I did not second that, as I, I am...
Well, the guidelines aren't changing. I mean, the recovery, the recovery plan that we all voted on, what was it, last week or two weeks ago, is exactly what we all agreed is, was best. So, I don't understand how it's changed from last week to today, as far as what we agreed upon. What's changed?
Well, Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you. Before we get into motions, I'd really like to hear what Dr. Minz has to say for recommendations, so that I can make a decision based on what he has to say. The second part of that is, I was on the conference call with Commissioner Meitzner today, when I talked, when we talked to Ed Iler up in Johnson County, and I, I like the direction that Johnson County is going, it's sort of what your motion...
It's exactly what, what Johnson County is doing.
...that direction. But I, I do believe we need to hear what Dr. Minz has to say before we move that direction. The other thing I like about following the same direction as Johnson County is that that's two of the largest population centers in, in the entire state, and so if we're going to do something, we ought to be pretty well in line with the, the other largest population center. So, after I hear what Dr. Minz has to say, then, I think, then we may want to consider motions at that time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
I agree. I'd like to hear from Dr. Minz.
Dr. Minz?
Okay, thank you. Carol Minz, again, Health Officer, Sedgwick County. Thank you for giving me the time to spend a little bit with you and just discuss this issue. I know we've been walking a tightrope between keeping this infection as low as possible, and yet not harming our economy any more than necessary, and that's been a very difficult tightrope to walk. Unfortunately, we're not out of the woods yet, and I'm afraid we won't be out of the woods until there's a definitive vaccine or medication that we develop that can control this virus, so it's probably going to be going on for a number of months. We have heard some positive movements on both those fields, but I, I don't think that we have anything that's going to be available in the next three or four months, at the earliest. Secondly, I'd like to say, I think we're very fortunate to be in Sedgwick County. We have one of the lowest rates of cases in the state for metropolitan county, much lower than Johnson County, than Y and O, and Leavenworth. Our number of cases per population is low compared to those other counties. Our deaths are the lowest of any county of metropolitan size in Kansas. We've only had three deaths that were not associated with long-term care facilities. So, that is the good news. The good news is, is we, we are doing well, and I attribute that success to the fact that a sizable segment of our population is adhering to the social gathering restrictions. They're listening to the mask recommendations we've made, so a lot of the public is, not all, but a lot of the public is complying. I have to give them some credit for helping keep this thing under moderate control here in Sedgwick County. I also have to give some credit to our public health officials. They have been doing more and more testing, and they have been doing more and more testing of contacts of cases, so that we can get them out of the circulation, so they're not transmitting it. We've made marked improvements over the last month in doing testing, and I want to congratulate them for those, that's hard work. I was at the West Clinic earlier this week, and it, it's a big operation out there doing this, drive-through testing, big operation. So, those are the, the good things that's happening here in Sedgwick County, and I, we've got to stay on that track. I do not want to have something happen to where we have to back up and go back to step, Phase One again, because I think that would be very traumatic for the community. I think that either plan, either the county plan, or the AdAstra plan was a good template, a good starting point, but it is always said, we have to watch the numbers as we go, before we make decisions about when to move from one phase to the next. I believe we were doing well, and I was at some point earlier last week, saying that we're really making good progress, and maybe we're ready to advance. But then I saw the crowds at Memorial Day, I saw interviewing people who were down in the Ozarks on Memorial Day, and I got to tell you, I'm a little concerned. And you know, it takes about two incubation periods, which is about 12 to 15 days, before you're going to see the cases coming out of the woods from a previous exposure. So, my feeling is that we should adopt at least as recommendations, one of these two plans, and I know there's a lot of difference between the two, very minor differences. One advantage of AdAstra is, that's what the adjacent counties are, are doing, for the most part, and that's what Johnson County did. The advantage of the county plan is, we had some additional details in there that weren't in the AdAstra plan, but I think either is acceptable. But we got to stay on track, we got to make sure we don't regress, and that's going to take continued adherence to the recommendations in those plans, and we need to message that to our community. All of us need to keep messaging that to our community. The social distancing has helped. One of the reasons I'm a little reluctant to move from Phase Two to Phase Three is, first of all, we've had some activity on Monday that might lead to some regression of the social distancing we have, and might lead to more cases, and I don't want to have to back up. Secondly, we need to make sure that the public understands, just because the numbers look good, we're not out of the woods yet, because this virus is not going to leave Wichita, it's not going to leave Sedgwick County anytime soon, it's going to be here, it's going to be circulating. I don't know whether this virus is like other respiratory viruses, and it kind of calms down in the summertime, like influenza does. I don't know. We've never been through a year with this virus yet, so we don't know. So, I, there's a number of things that are in play that I think are helping us control it, social distancing, better contact tracing, possibly seasonality, don't know. Only time will tell. So, it'd be my recommendation that we stick with one of these two plans, which is ever most desirable by you all. Strongly recommend it. I would add, though, I think there ought to be a couple of things that we consider as putting in an order. First of all, I think we need to better define what a gathering is. I think it is a little vague in the, the two plans. I would suggest that a gathering, at this point, be, should be restricted to 20 people, and that those people should be defined as people who pretty much know everybody, rather than just random people from all over, because if anybody in that group does come down, we would like to be able to identify who was in the group, so we can contact them and make sure they get tested. I think a group of 45 is a pretty big group. A group of 90, it's unlikely that everyone would know each other, and be very difficult to do any contact tracing of a group that large. And so, there could be people who were at that event, got infected, but we can't figure out who they were, and they're out in the community spreading. And I don't think we're quite to the stage yet where we can quite afford that yet. So, I would suggest that there's two things I would recommend that we do in addition to adopting one of these two plans, as our recommended continued phasing out, that we ought to stay in Phase Two for the time being, until June 8th, when we will have essentially two incubation periods from Monday, to see if there's been any developments as a result of that. I hope there isn't, but it's a possibility, and the virus is not gone, and it's not going to be gone. Can I ask and answer any questions you might have?
Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you. Dr. Minz, a couple of things are in, in that Phase Two. One is swimming pools, and, and don't those chlorine kill different germs and bacteria and diseases?
You know, I don't know that we have good data on how potent it is for coronavirus, COVID-19, but I suspect it should have some effect, plus, obviously, when you dive in the pool, there's some dilution effect, so it probably is not as big a risk as some of the other things.
Okay. And, and when we're talking about different businesses, one of the things that's still closed in Phase Two are bars, but if they follow social distancing, I don't understand the difference on the bars from other different kind of businesses, as long as people are, are either wearing masks, if that, if they're not going to be six foot apart, or if they're, they're following the different social distancing guidelines.
I realize there's, it's hard to have a blanket term that defines what a bar is. I have a friend who told me that at restaurants, you usually go there to dine with your family or with a group of friends, and you can observe social distancing, they, they're not going to go over to the other tables and go mingle with those people, so they're mainly meeting with their group, which I think our suggestion of 20 as the largest group would certainly define that. Some have told me, you know, at a bar, we purposely go there to avoid social distancing. So, there may be a difference between restaurants and, or should I say nightclubs? I think some would prefer to use the word nightclubs than bars, because some bars, obviously, it's a restaurant and a bar, both. One suggestion that I think could be put in order, that any bar or nightclub in Sedgwick County that does not meet the city of Wichita DER licensing definition should not be opened yet.
And my final question, and we've heard this on a number of our meetings, it deals with 81 Speedway. They have a huge event coming up, that they're going to need to have a number of people there in order to be able to break even on it. It's, it's an outdoor venue, it's, it's up in Commissioner Cruz's district, but if you've got a, a large outdoor venue like that, do we need to limit it to 2,000 people? They have a huge event coming up that they're going to need to have a number of people there in order to be able to break even on it. It's an outdoor venue. It's up in Commissioner Cruz's district. But if you've got a large outdoor venue like that, do we need to limit it to 2,000 people?
Well, I think outdoors maybe does decrease the likelihood of exposure a little bit, but the main cause of exposure is how close you're together. So even if it's outdoor, if you've got people who are essentially shoulder to shoulder, back to front, that's going to increase the risk if there's anyone in that crowd that they could give it to the people around them. So that kind of goes against the social distancing that we were recommending for every other activity in this county.
So wouldn't you be able to recommend that they could open if they could comply with the social distancing?
I think that's what we're telling the other businesses to do. It's what we're telling the retail people, who I've been to retail where they have lines on the floor, six feet. When you're waiting to pay, you get in line and you get one of those strips, you don't until you're called up to the desk. So I admire the businesses that are doing that, and I think any business that wants to open, they're going to have to address how they can facilitate that social distancing that we think has been partly the explanation for our success so far with this infection.
Very good. One more brief question, and I'll turn it back over. As these businesses open, one of the things that I don't think we've done very well is identify publicly the coronavirus hotspots, the clusters. And I don't understand why that we can't get that information out, especially if we do start opening up. I think the public needs to know where the clusters are because they don't want to go to those businesses. So I think if anything is a deterrent on, or motivation to comply with the guidelines, it would be that we would tell the public where the coronavirus clusters are located.
Well, I would defer to legal about publicizing things like that, but I will say, as you know, a number of the clusters have been at our long-term care facilities, and essentially once they've identified that, they have stopped all visitors, so people aren't going to be visiting there whether they know about it or not. They will not let them in, and they've had to do that because it's been such a problem there. We've had some clusters at businesses, but again, I'm sensitive to the business, and they want to make sure that their business is stable. So I don't know that I'm the best expert to comment. Maybe Mr. Pat Boone wants to comment on whether revealing the identity of clusters gets into issues of privacy.
And Justin, do you want to address the HIPAA issue? I don't know if we want to stray off into the HIPAA in some of this, Commissioner, or not, but we're happy to answer some of this. We have worked very hard, working with the Health Department and legal, to try to determine what information we could release that wouldn't violate HIPAA and at the same time identify some of the clusters so that people would know. But it's a difficult issue. It's an issue that's being discussed and argued all across the country on how much information should be released, and if you release such information, does that benefit the public? Does it hurt the Health Department's mission to try to help these businesses and track individuals and do their mission? But those are things that we just look at at each time to see if there's a violation of HIPAA if we identify a cluster or not.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Got a couple of questions. And phase two, and Justin, this may be you. So if we were to try to mirror somewhat what Johnson County said, where we're not imposing additional limits, we're adhering to the current world. The current world is a phase two right now in our state, right?
Chairman, again, Justin Wagner, Assistant County Counselor. Actually, as of 12:01 a.m. today, there are no limitations or restrictions in place in Sedgwick County right now.
But if we referenced to her plan, if we reference to the Ad Astra plan, it would be in the middle of phase two until June 8th. And in phase two are those six items that are not in phase two. The bars and nightclubs, in-person graduation, pools, less than 2,000 venues, fairs, connoires, summer camps. Can you define what summer camp means?
I'm not aware of any definition or expansion that the governor's frequently asked questions had for summer camps. I would imagine that those are typically children who go to those types of camps for, you know, various things, whether it be...
Overnight stuff.
Overnight stuff. I think that's probably, you know, usually for recreational or group types of activities. I don't know that it's limited to overnight. You know, you could have a basketball camp, for example, where a bunch of kids would go to that, and you know, that may be. But I don't know that the governor's office really opined on that any further as to what a definition of a camp would be, but I think it would certainly include, like you said, Chairman, overnight camps, probably because of the cohabitation or living in close quarters and all the interactions that would occur.
Okay. Thanks. And maybe, Dr. Menz, I got a question for you. I'm sorry, back and forth a little bit. So we started testing on, I understand, March 23rd. You may or may not know that data. I had to ask myself.
I think that's correct. We had very few testing kits.
Right. So we had very few, then we got more, and then we got more. So anyway, so March 23rd, April 23rd, May, so we've been testing for over 60 days. And as a county of 510 or 20,000, in those 60 days, we've had 560 positive cases out of 500,000 people, which you've commented that we've done a nice job. And 410 or 11 have recovered, so that leaves about 150 positive cases are still in various phases of recovery.
Quarantine or isolation.
Quarantine isolation. And I know that from our hospital calls, the hospitalization is very, very small, less than a half a dozen, and even some of those are from out of the area.
I believe yesterday there was only nine patients in our hospitals total.
Okay. So, and then now we've tested over 10,000 people, both us and other testing agencies. So a lot of people are getting tested. I guess I'm coming back to the fact that the last couple of weeks have just been one, two, maybe three, two positive cases on a daily basis.
Yeah, somewhere in that range, some days a little higher or something.
So the questions that I'm getting asked, and the reality is, so how, it's maybe a tough question, how long, a community of our size, how long do we go where we only have 140 cases under recovery before we say, hey, we're doing pretty good? We need to loosen the strings and get open.
Yeah, we have. And that is, the virus is not going to disappear, very unlikely. We shouldn't expect it to disappear.
Okay.
Until, I don't think it's going to leave our community before 2021, and even if we don't have a vaccine in 2021, it's going to be still here. At what level, I don't know. That's why I hope that we can convince our public that this social distancing is not temporary, at least for the time being. They've just got to keep doing it if we want to keep this thing suppressed. I mean, it...
I would agree. It is crucial that the social distancing. I don't think I've shook a hand in a month, barely even touched elbows. I mean, I think the message, and I've tried to get out some, and it does seem like the businesses are really practicing.
I think a number of businesses. Yes, I agree.
And maybe it's, maybe I'm my age or whatever, I just don't go to some places that might be violators, but we haven't really heard of too many protesting violators or thumbing their nose at the rules to, as a matter of fact, I think we've had cooperation with our police department across the street to go and help educate and coach if there's something that's borderline being a problem. So I'm really, I don't have any problem continuing to talk about how crucial it is for the distancing. I'm glad that you're saying that the distancing is really important in defining a gather, no matter what the number is. Defining gathering, I think, is something we all probably would agree that we would like it to be people that I'm going to say are known to each other in order to help contact tracing if we have an event among those that are known to each other. I don't know how we want to word that up, regardless of whatever the number is, but I would agree. That'd be a more clear statement for businesses as well, and some people are confused about what a gathering means. So you mentioned it before, and I kind of regurgitated it, but if we do say, I wrote down, you say, no, people that know each other, could be family, could be friends, could be, so I'm all for getting that definition defined further for us. So thank you for allowing me to say a few things. What else we got?
I have something.
Yes, Commissioner Cruz.
So we're talking 12 days here. I mean, when we talk testing, you know, we are, we're only testing like 19.9 per thousand people, so we have a long ways to go with testing. You know, I would just want to reiterate, what happens today affects us two weeks from today. So that's really important to understand, that if we go back to just opening every single thing up, we're going to have a lot more gatherings, we're going to have a lot more people getting together, shaking hands, doing those kinds of things, so it's going to affect us 14 days from today and each subsequent day. So that's, I mean, we're talking 12 days of the plan that we've been talking about for, you know, the past couple of weeks at least, and it's important to stay the course. So the motion that I made was to, I said, I move that the Board of County Commissioners take action to adopt the Governor's Ad Astra Plan as strongly recommended guidelines to be followed by Sedgwick County residents and businesses. What would you change other than the restrictions with gathering sizes? And is that a agreeable motion to you?
Well, I'm in agreement with your motion. I have no objection to your motion in terms of adopting the Ad Astra Plan. I do think there needs to be an order to define the definition of a gathering and the size limit, and I also think there needs to be, my opinion is, there needs to be an order that any bar or nightclub in Sedgwick County that does not meet the city of Wichita DER licensing definition not be open.
Until what date?
June 8th at the soonest. And then June 8th, we would reevaluate. In the spirit of, we need to take interventions, see what happens, evaluate where those interventions have been adequate or inadequate, and then make the next decision at that point.
So in light of recent discussions about motion language, I would like to ask to take a recess to craft new motion language that is so eloquently stated by our health professional.
Okay. Is that a motion to recess for five minutes?
Second.
Okay. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
I can't second my own motion. Okay, well, I appreciate your second. Thank you.
It's been a motion and a second to recess for five minutes. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Hell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meister?
Aye.
We stand recessed until, let's call it 10:20, I mean, 2:20. I'm still in the morning. We need our counselor in.
Tony, give me a hit thumbs up, and I'll pass it on.
Okay. Okay, welcome back. We have returned from the recess, so we'll consider the, the meeting back open. And we had a placement in front of us, a potential motion. Okay, so Commissioner Cruz, you had the recess to redo some stuff in writing. Thank you for getting it in writing for us.
There's two motions here. I would move number one. And you wanted to open some writings, and there they are.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry about that. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you. Ida, do we need a wait? Can I make a substitute motion, or do we need a wait for a second?
Sure. Well, I guess we ought to read it to the, for the record.
Okay.
The motion as submitted is adopt the Governor's Ad Astra Plan as strongly recommended guidelines to be followed by Sedgwick County residents and businesses with the modification that it further defines public gatherings as persons commonly known to one another. I'm trying to see how consistent that is with, with what the, what Johnson County had done. It looks fairly close. But, but they didn't do a motion. I still wouldn't know how they could do that. Don't know how they did that, which is doing a press release, but they did, which is, which is fine. Could have had Kate do a press release, I guess. Anyway, so you had a?
Substitute motion. Do we need that one to pass or?
That's a motion.
I mean, do we need a second vote on that, or?
Well, it hasn't had a second.
So formality is, I'll read it, and you guys can decide whether you want a second or not. Is that, is that what you're asking?
No, no. I'm just asking if now's the time appropriate to make a substitute motion.
Either one.
Okay.
We can have a?
Okay.
Okay, so I, I move that the Board of County Commissioners take action to adopt the Governor's Ad Astra Plan as strongly recommended guidelines to be followed by Sedgwick County residents and businesses with the modification that it further defines public gatherings as persons commonly known to one another.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to make a, a substitute motion.
Excuse me, Commissioner, was there a second to that motion?
No.
No. Not yet.
You don't, I don't think you need to make a substitute motion.
Well, that's what I was asking.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Okay. My mistake, my mistake.
If there's no?
Okay, if there's no second, then Commissioner O'Donnell.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that we approve the phase-out approach and that we are able to open our economy. We will use the Governor's order as a recommendation to interesting parties made available on our website and other forms of communication by the county, and that we rely on individuals to make the best choices for themselves, their family, and their neighbors. That's my motion.
Okay, why don't you read that again, more slowly?
Can we have that motion in writing?
Sure. I move that we approve the phase-out approach to open our economy. We will use the Governor's order as a recommendation to interesting part, to interested parties available on social media. And that we allow individuals to make the best choices for themselves, their families, and neighbors.
I mean, apart from the rhetoric that you're stating, it's not any different than the motion I just made.
I would disagree, but I haven't got a second yet either, so we might not get a vote.
Why don't, why don't we get a, can we just, could you just make a copy of that, so it's in writing, not, not typed up, please?
Of course.
May I make a, a recommendation for one word change real quickly?
Yes.
Please change the word allow to the word encourage on the last sentence.
Okay. And encourage individuals. Yes, so, uh, would you like me to start over, Mr. Chairman?
So why don't you just let, let, let him make a quick copy? Maybe just run five copies real quick?
Okay.
I don't know that it's, it's important or not, well, it is for us, but, but in the Johnson County release, they, they made a comment that they will not impose additional limits based on the current conditions. But I think your motion pretty much, you read that it's not, not imposing additional limits.
Mr. Chairman, I do have one question. With the way the, the way the, the motion was read, it references the Governor's order, and as of right now, there is no order.
Right.
So I guess I'd like to be, do we need to clarify exactly what document we're referring to with that sentence, so we know?
You're referring to the phase-out.
The phase-out. The document that includes the phase-out for what was the Governor's order.
The state, or Ad Astra Plan, the state's Ad Astra Plan.
Right, so the phase-out document that the Governor, you know, had drafted that includes a phase-out plan that's no longer part of any order, that is, I believe what Commissioner O'Donnell's referring to.
Is the motion that I made specifically references?
I assume Commissioner O'Donnell is referencing the phase-out portion of the Ad Astra Plan as adopted on May 26, 2020.
Obviously.
Because there's no, there's, there's no current executive order by the Governor that talks about phase-out at this point, so.
The only reason that I used that phase-out was because that's kind of the end of this Ad Astra Plan.
Right.
This isn't about endorsing or opposing this plan. I'm just saying, let's get on with it, let's get the economy open, let's, let people get back to their lives, and have trust that individuals are going to make good decisions for themselves, their family, and their neighbors. That's the whole, that, that's my whole motion, and I used the term phase-out just because that was the end.
Okay, I'm not sure if I can read your writing as well as?
Well, I didn't know they were just going to copy.
I know, and that's okay. I'm just saying.
This writing.
I don't, I'm not being disrespectful, I'm just saying.
I understand that, but we're waiting on a second, so if, if not?
I want to be able to read it. Can you, can you read it, so that I can make sure the words are, I'm looking at is right?
I, I move that we approve the phase-out approach to open our economy using the Governor's order as a recommendation to interested parties available on social media to encourage individuals to make the best choices for themselves, their families, and neighbors.
Using the Governor's order. You mean, the Governor's?
Plan.
Reference?
It should have been the plan.
Yes.
I literally scratched this out.
I know, the Ad Astra Plan?
Yes, as a recommendation to interested parties.
The Governor's Ad Astra Plan.
I just want to point out, that's why I asked for a five-minute recess, to have a motion language written, so that, I mean, that was the time to, I mean, I don't understand how this is any different. You just switched words around.
Well, I'll make a motion that we recess for five minutes, so we can get it in typing and back to us.
Yeah, I can just revoke the motion. I'll just, I'll just revoke my motion, so we don't need it in writing. So can I do that, Counselor?
Yeah.
Okay, I repeal my motion.
Commissioner Dennis?
Let me go back to what I said when I first spoke today, that I do like what Johnson County did. And let me read a couple things out of that, so that, to refresh everybody's minds if they haven't seen it. It says, "Johnson County government will not impose additional limits based on current conditions." I like that. They strongly recommend that Johnson County residents and businesses continue to adhere to the phases and guidance in Ad Astra Plan. And then they go on and explain in two paragraphs, which are very detailed, and says, "We cannot stress highly enough the importance of residents and businesses continuing to follow the guidance of the Ad Astra Plan. This gives us the time that we need to monitor the data, see the impact of loosening restrictions, reopening businesses and gatherings that occur over Memorial Day weekend. It's critical that we all continue to practice physical distancing, wear barrier masks where we cannot maintain social distancing, practice good hygiene, make decisions to protect the health of the community. If businesses and residents follow the recommendations, we have the hope that good progress will have been made, that would have been made up until now will continue. And now that we are a few weeks past the end of the stay-at-home order and the beginning of reopening our economy, we are seeing an increase in positive cases, just as we anticipated." I'm not sure we need to put that in there. "We will continue," the part I did like, though, "is we will continue to investigate outbreaks, increase testing, and ramp up contact tracing investigations. We will continue to work with long-term care facilities to mitigate spread among our most vulnerable population, and we appreciate the fact that, in this case, Johnson County has taken the steps to flatten the curve and strongly urge you to help continue that effort." So basically, they said that they will not impose additional limits, and then they went on to explain what the impact of that is. So I don't have a problem with that. I don't know, I, I guess the, the easiest motion is that Sedgwick County will not oppose additional limits, and that we would recommend that residents and businesses continue to adhere to the phases and guidance in the Ad Astra Plan. That puts us directly in line with what Johnson County did, and that's the two largest population centers.
That is a, thanks for refreshing. I know we all have a, had a copy of that, and it's, it kind of combines both what Commissioner Cruz's earlier motion was, and it reflects the spirit, I think, of, of Mr. O'Donnell.
Could we take a five-minute recess to come up with a new wording?
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Motion and a, is there a second? A second. A motion and a second for another five minutes. Let's make it a seven-minute recess. We'll be back at 2:45. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meisner?
Aye.
Nick. Okay, we returned. We've returned from recess. And thank you again, Commission, for practicing, getting the words in writing for our review. Okay, we are back from recess. Based on the previous, before the last recess, we had a couple of discussions about a couple of motions. One from Commissioner O'Donnell, it looks like, has been formalized. And it looks like Commissioner Dennis had also made a comment about one. So what's the, what is the desire of the Commission? Commissioner Dennis was going to his, Commissioner Howell?
Okay.
Commissioner Dennis, okay.
So, thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I don't know that we actually need to do anything at all. But if we are going to do something, if you want to clarify a position, I've continued to think about what Commissioner O'Donnell stated earlier. I cleaned it up a little bit to my satisfaction. It's basically what he said, but I tweaked a couple of words. And so I have this in writing in front of you. It says, "I move that we adopt the county," "I move that we adopt the Kansas phase-out plan as outlined in the ad Astra policy as recommended guidelines in order to open the county's economy and that we will make this plan available on the county's social media platforms as well as the county website and encourage all businesses and individuals to make the best choices for themselves, for their businesses, themselves, and their families." Now we'll go ahead and make that motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, there's a motion in a second. Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a substitute motion to that. And I do agree to some extent that maybe we don't need to do anything right now. But I think my substitute motion will probably take care of that. "I move that the Board of County Commissioners not impose additional limits based on current conditions and recommend that Sedgwick County residents and businesses continue to adhere to the phases and guidance of the state's ad Astra plan with the modification that it further defines public gatherings as persons commonly known to one another and allow gatherings of up to 20 individuals rather than 15."
Second.
Okay. Be a motion in a second as well on the substitute motion. Can you repeat the very "and" after "commonly known to one another"?
After what's printed here, I added, "and allow gatherings of up to 20 people rather than 15."
Okay.
And that's just in the phase two. After phase three, you don't have to worry about it.
Okay, Commissioner O'Donnell.
Thank you. So would that 20-person limit go until June 8, then? Is that the, is that the plan?
It's based on the phase two.
Right, but phase two doesn't exist anymore, right?
Right.
So I would just, I would just be very cautious to impose more limits where I think the numbers prove that we've been doing the right thing. I believe the Kansas Legislature, you know, worked diligently to make sure that we could have more control. I understand why you're doing that, but I just don't, I just don't feel like that's necessary at this point. If we have an uptick in cases, more spreading, I could see the value in doing that. But I feel like we're going to make, we're going to make smart decisions and not have situations like the Lake of the Ozarks, which I think everybody can agree was a little reckless. Even Dr. Minz mentioned that. But yeah, I'm just, I'm more comfortable with allowing individuals to open their businesses right now and people to go out and be smart. And I think that's what my initial motion was trying to promote, was for individuals to make the best choices for their businesses, families, themselves, and their neighbors. So I do feel like that's the best position for the county. But that's just my opinion.
I observed that both of the motions had reference to the ad Astra, the state's ad Astra plan, correct?
Yes.
The differences I see, though, is Commissioner Howell's motion is to essentially just open everything up without a phased approach. And the second motion by Commissioner Dennis was to take a phased approach that we see around the country as being a best practice. Again, I want to reiterate, what we see today and what we do today will affect us two weeks from now. I cannot, I cannot say that strongly enough. I think it's important that we understand there is a virus in our community that's not going away just because we are phasing things out. It's still here. And it's important to continue what so many have worked so hard to develop. These plans took a lot of time. They were carefully thought out. Our business community has been very supportive of the recovery plan. Our staff has worked diligently to put it together because it's the responsible thing to do. So I'd have to say that we need to stay the course. We're only talking 12 more days. I think it's important to continue what we've been doing.
Okay. Other comments? Commissioner Howell?
Thank you. Dr. Minz did say one thing that I thought was curious. He said on the 8th of June that they would reevaluate. My opinion, one of the challenges we've had on this is predictability and certainty in terms of where are we headed? And I think if you do a reevaluation on June the 8th, that's a little bit late for making decisions on, again, additional restrictions. And so that is very concerning to me. I do appreciate your questions and your comments earlier, Mr. Chairman. And Dr. Minz, I guess, stated that we had nine currently in the hospitals today. Some of the other numbers, which I think are very interesting, according to KDHE's website, we've had a total of 89 hospitalizations in Sedgwick County. Of those, 26 of those were in ICU, and five of those were on ventilators. Those are very low numbers. And again, I think Dr. Minz said, and I agree with him, that we are very blessed to be in Sedgwick County where our numbers are very, very low. But having said that, it's hard to come up with reasons for us to be extremely restrictive, especially when our unemployment rates are 25% in Sedgwick County. Our state revenue right now, the last number I heard was they're anticipating a 41% loss in revenue to the state of Kansas. I don't care where you are in the political spectrum. There's going to be significant problems operating in the state of Kansas going forward if we don't get this economy back on speed. I think this COVID-19 is a very serious matter. But the reason we issued restrictive orders in the first place, which, by the way, I actually haven't ever supported. The original order that was issued on March 22nd, I voted no. We only had one case at that time. But today we have about 130 cases. In fact, we subtract out the number of deaths and the number of recoveries from our positive case count, which includes all test sites of Sedgwick County. We have about 130 active cases. And many of them, as you said, Mr. Chairman, are in the process of being past their limits or past their dates. And so they'll be coming off the numbers pretty soon. As bad as that is, we don't have, again, number one reason we had these restrictive orders was because we wanted to make sure we took care of our people as they needed medical help in the hospitals. And we've obviously done that. We didn't have to do triage. We had respirators. I've continued to ask, what's our capacity for respirators? What's our capacity for hospital beds? They refuse to want to answer those questions. So I have to make the assumption right now that 26 ICUs since the beginning of this pandemic in Sedgwick County and five ventilators in use since the beginning of this pandemic are pretty low numbers. And we have much capacity left to go. I can't see a reason in the data to continue restrictive orders. I understand there's a two-week incubation period. We started haircuts. What was the date we started haircuts? It's been a couple of weeks ago.
Right.
We had a surge in COVID cases since then. There was lots of concern that that was going to happen. I'd like to say, I don't think it has happened. Yesterday, we had, I think, one new case. The day before that, we had three new cases, and on it goes. And so we've been in the 120, 120 active cases for several, for quite a few days now, I think, at least a week or two. And I just can't see a good reason at this point to continue these restrictive orders. I think it's time for us to trust our citizens. They understand the risks. They understand what needs to be done. And I think that it comes down to personal responsibility. We need to trust our citizens. And if someone wants to take a risk by going to Lowe's or going to the grocery store or going to work or opening their business, they understand that more than anybody else. Nobody cares for our health more than we do. And I just think for the government to continue these restrictive orders doesn't seem to have purpose. So I think going to the phase-out plan as soon as possible is the only thing that makes sense to me. And I would encourage to get a majority of this commission to support that plan. Thank you.
Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If you read my motion, it is not a restrictive order. There's nothing in there that says that this is a requirement. It says that it's recommended that the county residents and businesses continue to adhere to the guidance. So there is nothing in here that says that if you don't adhere to it, that you're going to have the Sheriff's Department or the Police Department come and shut down your business. The only thing that I can foresee that might be a negative is that if they don't adhere to the social distancing and the guidance that we put out, they're going to end up as a COVID-19 cluster. And I've already asked once today if we can identify those clusters. I certainly don't know of any business whatsoever that would ever want to be identified as a COVID-19 cluster. So I would think that with that motivation, that they do not want to be a cluster identified, that they would. that they would try and the best that they can to adhere to these different guidance that we put out. And again, all I've said was I, we recommend that they do that. There is not a requirement in my motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, thanks for clarifying that. Okay. With that, we have a substitute motion from Commissioner Dennis. And being no other comments, our Commissioner O'Donnell.
Obviously, the initial motion was virtually my position, so that's why I really do want to stick with that. I understand what you're saying, Commissioner Dennis. I just think it does give a little bit of inconsistencies with a message saying, well, we, we'll open it up to 20 people, but it's just a recommendation. That does concern me of confusion, but I understand where you're coming from, that we're not, this isn't a mandate. So I, I do appreciate that. And that, that is why I'll be voting against the, the substitute motion and try to keep the, the initial motion, which I had provided, I don't know, 20, 30 minutes ago at this point. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
I have a question. The gathering has always been kind of separate from others, the other stuff we've talked about, addressing this to Mr. Papoun. So at any time, can Dr. Minz, does he have the authority on the gathering world that is out of our, is out of our purview?
Both the County Commission and Dr. Minz have the authority to establish gathering restrictions. Dr. Minz has the authority beyond that, we believe, to restrict certain businesses from being open. That's the difference. The County Commission doesn't have that authority, just to restrict gatherings, so.
Okay. All right. So you've confirmed that, oh yeah, Commissioner Howell.
Mr. Chairman, just want to clarify. So Commissioner Dennis, if you'd like to respond, that's fine. But what you're suggesting then is that between now and June the 8th, we will not allow large venues, I would explain so many things like 15,000-person concerts at Interst Bank Arena or baseball games at the baseball stadium or whatever that would be. I, I think it's going to take time to plan those things out anyways. I don't think that's going to happen in the next week or so. Swimming pools, which again, they're outdoors in the sunlight. You and I have had that conversation before in the UV light. I think it has, is a pretty good job of destroying the coronavirus as well as the chlorine aspect. And so there's that part. So I don't think, I'm not sure that pools are necessarily going to open because we changed this from Phase 2.0 to Phase-Out. I'm not sure that that's going to significantly change what happens in the community. And you go down this list of seven things that were listed by, by staff earlier. I don't think any of this is going to substantially change. And I, and I go back to what I said earlier. When you have 20 people standing near each other and there's a six-foot distance, another 20 people standing near each other, I don't know that it matters at that point. You know, if it was two or three people, I get, I get the idea. But when you're talking about 20 people or more, to me, it's just, the, the risk is nearly the same, whether it's open wide up versus trying to limit this to 20. And as you said, Mr. Commissioner Dennis, we're not going to enforce this. These are just guidelines. So again, with that in mind, I, I just would say, we, we understand that when you are in, when you're, when you're close to other people and you're sharing personal space, that's where the risk comes from. And I think people understand that. And so I appreciate your, your motion, but I guess my point would be, between now and June the 8th, is it significantly important that we, we have this continued language to restrict these seven things for the next week and a half or so? I'm just, I'm just curious for your perspective on that.
Well, I debated, the reason I asked some of the questions I asked Dr. Minz, I agree with you, and Dr. Minz even agreed that, that pools, it looks like there's probably not too much risk on the pools. I asked the questions about the total gathering of 2,000 people. And that still concerns me, but his, his answer gave me some confidence that we could go over 2,000 people as long as that they comply with social distancing and it's not going to be a problem. So again, my, my, my motion says I recommend, or the Sedgwick County, rather, recommends this. And so I don't have a problem with making recommendations along those lines. And again, if, if someone opens up a swimming pool, I don't have a problem with that. To me, I just don't think that we can put all those different caveats in the motion. That would make the motion a little un-
Cumbersome.
It'd be very cumbersome. So, so that's why that it's written the way it is. It's a recommendation, and that way we don't have to go through each one of these different things that are prohibited in Phase Two.
Thank you, Mr. Howell.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for the conversation. So I'm reminded on, even on both motions, but the, but the substitute motion, so it's not in, in order. It's not a law. It's not thus, it's not really enforceable. So it, it, and we've got the Governor's Special Session, June 3rd. We've got this date, June 8th, out there. There's, there can be some more moving parts right around the corner as we go through this. I'm, I, based on the flexibility of, of the second motion, I, I respect both the motions tremendously. One leaps to the end right away, and one just says we recommend that we still take a, take a little path. So, but again, it's, it's not law. It's not enforceable. And it recognizes the actions recently of the state legislation and the Governor's actions. So. Any other comments? Being done, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
No.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
No.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
I vote aye, so we can make this community continue to go forward and continue to be safe. I, I can't stress enough how crucial it is that we continue to practice the social distancing. I like the fact that it's emphasized to wear masks, especially when you cannot maintain social distancing. So you could maintain social distance and wear a mask where you can. And I think if we keep doing this, oh my gosh, it's going to make protecting the health of our community and can let us take more further steps in advance. So thank you, Commission, for that. Commissioners, fellow commissioners, for this, for this discussion and, and our, our motions and our approvals. So with that, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item A, setting a public hearing date to consider the county's application for community development block grant funds to the state of Kansas.
Okay, this item. Welcome, Mr. Brent Shelton.
Good afternoon, Chairman Meitzner, members of the County Commission. For the record, I'm Brent Shelton, Deputy Chief Financial Officer. The next two items that we're going to be discussing are kind of intertwined and interrelated, so we'll kind of take them in order as you prefer, but let me give you a little bit of background. To begin with, the state of Kansas has made about $9 million available through their community development block grant program to support the community responses to the COVID-19 crisis. Now, these grants are administered by the Department of Commerce. They're grants to local governments, and they're focused in two ways. One is for economic development, the second is for meal programs. The economic development grants are for a maximum of $300,000 per community, and they're focused on helping local businesses retain jobs for low to moderate income people. The funds would go directly to those businesses to keep people employed, to pay for things that they need to do to reopen or stay in business as a result of COVID expenditures. The meal programs provide up to $100,000 to support local food banks. They might provide meals to children that were affected by loss of school meal programs. The county was approached by the Regional Economic Area Partnership to see if we could apply on behalf of some of the smaller cities within the county that lack grant administration resources. Some of the cities in the county are going to apply for this money on their own, and so what we would do would be on behalf of other cities, the smaller ones that aren't going to make application on their own. Since we began the process, REAP has been working with our grant writer to gather information for this grant application, to find out information about unemployment and so forth. So as we began to research this opportunity, we uncovered a potential conflict with our current grants policy. And that's something that is in the second item after this one, and Justin Wagner will give you more details on that. So we've got two items today. One is to begin this grant application process, which is what this item is about. The second one then would be to look at a waiver and amendment to the grants, the grants policy. The application for the community development block grants requires a county commission resolution authorizing support for making that grant application. The resolution may only be adopted after a public hearing, and that needs to be noticed to the public five days in advance of that public hearing. These grants are being awarded on a first-come, first-served basis, and so time is of the essence for us to get the application in. So what we're seeking today with this item is that we recommend that you would set a date for the public hearing at 9:00 in the morning in this room on Wednesday, June 10th, to consider making the application for the community development block grants. If after that public hearing, you adopt that resolution, we'll have that grant application ready to go that day. So I would, I guess with this item, I would recommend that you pass the resolution to authorize that we make application for the community development block grant application. And I guess a recommendation for the, to establish the public hearing and authorize us to, to provide that.
Brent, is this the, this motion would be to establish the public hearing?
This is all we're doing is establishing the public hearing. I'm sorry.
That's what I, I would, okay. All right, we're on the same page?
Yep.
All right. Any questions for, yes, Commissioner O'Donnell?
I don't have any questions for Brent, but I'm willing to make a motion.
Okay.
That we approve the public hearing for June 10th, 2020, and direct the county clerk to publish a notice of public hearing.
Second.
Okay, been a motion in a second. Any other questions? Being done, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Okay, that motion carried, so you've got the public hearing.
Okay.
Next, next up is-
And Chairman, I don't know if the clerk has called the agenda item yet.
Oh, I'm sorry. Madam Clerk.
Item B, resolution adopting a revision to the grant application and award policy.
Again, Commissioners, Justin Wagner, Assistant County Counselor. What's in front of you on this agenda item is a proposed resolution to amend the county's grant policies and procedures document in a way that could be relevant to the grant that Brent Shelton just presented to you. The background is, I'll try to give an abbreviated version. If you have questions, I could explain it in more detail, but it, back in 2016, on June 1st, 2016, the Board of County Commissioners, as a matter of policy, really at the suggestion of, of former county commissioners, Richard Ranzau and Carl Peter John, had amended the grant policy. There were some concerns about a HUD, U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development requirement that an assessment of fair housing be completed pursuant to federal regulations. While HUD has suspended the use of that assessment tool, and in other words, the practical effect of that is local governments don't have to complete that assessment today, the regulation is still on the books. HUD's actually going through the process of getting rid of that regulation right now, but it's, it's not being completed. And so there's some concern from county staff that, you know, the, the policy as it sits today, and there is some ambiguity as to whether applying for the grant that Brent just mentioned, setting the public hearing for, would be consistent with our current grant policies and procedures. So the, the recommended action from staff is to delete, on page five, there should be a redlined document in front of you. If you go to page five of that document, subsection 5.8.9, to remove that language in the grant policies and procedures document, to remove any of the ambiguity I just mentioned. And then, you know, I would say as an alternative, if, if the board would deem it appropriate to amending the grant policies and procedures document, you could certainly waive the policy as it may apply to this particular grant, because you'll notice that one of the four grant subtypes, one of the four HUD grant types is the community development block grants. And so the concern would be that going through this grant may be contrary to that. I'd be happy to stand for any questions. A simple majority of vote would be enough to take any action on this matter.
Okay. Thank you for the presentation. Any questions? Okay. Well, I would entertain a motion to, to approve the new, is a motion to approve the new grant form.
Motion to adopt the resolution.
There you go. Thank you. Commissioner Cruz. Motion in a second? Who's second? Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Dennis. Any other comments? Being done, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item. There is no other item. There's others. Does any, okay. Commissioners, thank you again for your, for your time today and the, a lot of the work, and thank you for everybody's individual efforts as we try to fight through this, this battle and get our economy back and going. Thank you again. With that, we stand adjourned.